Good evening. We will now call the Planning Board meeting to order. At this time, we're going to have our roll call. We will now take attendance of all members. When your name is called, please say "here" or indicate your presence by raising your hand. Tamara Lipscomb, Thomas Thompson.
Here.
Kia Mills.
Here.
James Motley.
Here.
And William Roach. Right, at this time, we will have the adoption of the June 18th, 2025 Agenda. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the Agenda?
Certainly.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and properly second that we adopt tonight's Agenda. All in favor, let it be known by the -- your right hand. Okay, that's majority. Approval of the minutes for May 21st, 2025. Would someone move to approve the minutes? Are there any questions? I'm sorry. Okay. Any questions or any corrections from last month's meeting minutes? Okay. All right, hearing none, would someone move to accept the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes.
Okay.
A second.
Has been moved and properly second that we approve the minutes from our May 21st meeting. All in favor, let me know by the sign of your hand. Okay, that's unanimous. All right, we will go now to our items for consideration. Consideration of a conditional rezoning request for property located on Salem Church Road, Rockingham County Parcel Number 155460, to assign an initial city of reasonable zoning designation of conditional zoning residential six. The applicant is Braxton Real Estate and Development Company, LLC. The owner of the property is Judith Holstrom. The property owner is requesting voluntary annexation of the subject property docket number CZ2025010. Drew.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair. So, Braxton Real Estate and Development Company, LLC is petitioning with written consent of the current property owner to have an initial city of reasonable zoning designation of conditional zoning residential six assigned to the property located on Salem Church Road, Rockingham County Parcel Number 155460. As you mentioned, the owner of the property is Judith Holstrom, and the owner is petitioning to voluntarily annex the parcel into the city of Reedsville's corporate limit, and it is required that we assign a city of reasonable zoning designation upon annexation. The parcel encompasses a total combined area of 48.3 acres. The land is currently zoned Rockingham County zoning designation, residential agricultural or RA, and it is undeveloped. City water service is not existing or available. Water service will be provided by Dan River Water, and the applicant has provided a "will serve" letter from Dan River stating that there is adequate capacity and pressure to accommodate the development. City sewer service is available on the right-of-way of North Carolina Highway 14, which is approximately 600 feet to the east of this property. Thank you for that. There are no streams on site, and the property is not located in the Jordan Lake watershed or the Troublesome Creek watershed, so there's no density restrictions here, other than what the ordinance allows for. The flood insurance rate map -- floodplain insurance rate map firm indicates no floodplains. As you're aware, we've gone over conditional rezonings before. A conditional rezoning request amends the zoning map with site-specific conditions that are incorporated into the amendment, allowing the owner or the developer to place voluntary conditions on the land with the intent of either restricting the allowable uses or asking for deviations from the standards. The owner and applicant get to choose which conditions they want to place on the land, and in this case, they are choosing to limit conditions to some of those found in the R6 district. For Article 5, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance, any major change that alters the density of the development, creates uses that are incompatible with incompatible design features, increases pedestrian features, or changes the use of the -- approved for the property must again come before the Planning Board and City Council for approval. Minor changes which do not rise to the level of a major change can be approved administratively by the Planning Director. Approval of a concept plan does not issue approval for construction, and a preliminary flat review still must be completed by the Technical Review Committee, the TRC, along with applicable construction drawings for infrastructure prior to development. The owner and applicant have requested to limit the allowable uses to those shown on the concept plan, which we have before you tonight on the TVs. They are strictly doing single-family detached dwellings. So, we're not talking about apartments, we're not talking about townhomes or condos. These are single-family detached dwellings. The following development conditions have been requested. The concept plan shows 137 dwelling units. The applicant requests to be allowed up to 150 units. So, as long as they don't exceed 150 units with the development, there's no major change. Staff can approve up to 150 units. That's what's being requested. They're also providing a provision for a 20-foot-wide vegetative buffer around the property where possible that will be supplemented with fencing and landscaping where vegetative buffer does not currently exist. Lot-dimensional standards will be shown as on the concept plan with minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. And there will be 20-foot setbacks for the front, 20-foot setbacks for the rear, 5-foot side yard setbacks on interior side yards, and 10-foot side yard setbacks on corners. The proposed conditional rezoning aligns with Goal Number 3 of the reasonable land development plan to expand housing. The property is located in Growth Management Area 4, rural, which surrounds the city's periphery, primarily encompassing the areas to the south, west, and north. GMA 4 is predominantly characterized by residential development and undisturbed natural areas and abandoned land for new development. According to the land development plan, GMA 4 also provides an existing transportation network capable of accommodating growth. Additionally, residential development within GMA 4 is typically adjacent to urban areas and existing services, and that's what we have here. Staff finds the proposed conditional rezoning to be consistent with the reasonable land development plan, reasonable and in the public interest based on the aforementioned information that has been provided in this report and any attached statements of reasonableness and consistency. The planning staff recommends the proposed conditional rezoning be adopted. I'll take questions.
Thank you, Drew.
Drew, congratulations.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the 137 lots that --
137, yes, sir.
Sorry, 137, and that they may be increased to 150.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What will be the provisions to determine whether we escalate from 137 to 150?
Well, that would be a discussion between the applicant and staff, so as long as they're not increasing the density beyond that, since they're asking for that condition here, we would be granted the authority as staff or the director more particularly to grant up to 150, and that would be a conversation that we would just have with the developer as we move through the site plan review process and then ultimately the construction plan review process. That'd be an administrative decision.
One additional question. As I understand it, Danville will provide the water?
Danville River, yes.
Dan River.
Yep, Dan River Water, correct.
Right, right, okay. And the city sewer would be provided by Reedsville, is that correct?
Correct. It is available about 600 feet to the east in NC 14. Now, the city doesn't build that out, that does fall to the developer to build that out, but it is available there if they tap on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Drew, these setbacks that you mentioned, are these the standard setbacks for Zone 6?
These are not. So, R6 --
This is what I'm strict -- this is asking for some leadway?
Yes, yes, they're asking for smaller setbacks, particularly what you're looking at there are the side yard setbacks. So, you see eight foot in R6 on interior, they're asking for five foot. On corner lots, I believe it's 15, it's 15 or 25, and they're asking for 10. So, it's a slight deviation from that.
And is that for allowing some open space, or is this actually going beyond what Zone 6 would permit?
You say going --
As far as the lots available?
Yeah, so you can, with the reduction in the setback size, they'll be able to put the houses closer together, but they're still sticking with that 6,000-square-foot lot size, so they're able to squeeze them in a little bit closer.
And are we just looking at one thing, one motion to do at the end, or is there two because it's not been annexed yet? Is that?
Correct, yep. You're not hearing the annexation, you're just --
That's true.
You'll just reference one of the prepared motions for either approval or denial. Correct.
You've had connections of a conversation with the proposed developer. What's the game plan, the time schedule, if you will, for the development? Do you have any idea when the housing stock would come online for our area?
We haven't discussed a timeline. I can generally give you some information about the site plan review process, so once they get through the rezoning, typically you see a couple of months for site plan review, maybe a couple of months for construction plan review before all permits are issued. But questions regarding the timeline for development, breaking ground, I would reserve those for the applicant. They can probably give you more insight on what their schedule looks like, but you're looking at at least a few months from staff's perspective before all approvals are granted.
Okay. One final question. As I understand from reading, that if the plan is not completed within a two-year period of time, they have to come back to the city for revision. Is that correct, based upon the current zoning request?
There is a shot clock, and I believe two years is correct, but I could double-check that to be sure. It's not an indefinite approval.
Right.
You know, so they have a certain amount of time to get started, like a vested interest in it, but I would have to double-check exactly what that timeline is for you, and I could get you that information if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Drew? Okay. Thank you, Drew. Okay. At this time, we have someone here, anyone here to speak for the rezoning? If so, please come up, state your name and your address.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Greg Garrett, and my address is 6420 Hampton Hole Road, that's in Clemmons, Good evening. I am excited to be before you tonight. My name's Greg Garrett, and I'm the owner of Braxton Real Estate and Development Company. I have been developing communities in the Triad for over 25 years, so what's before you tonight is not anything new to me. I'm a Triad developer. And however, this is my first project in Reedsville, and I'm excited to have this before you tonight. It's actually been a long journey. We started off in the county and got kicked over because of the sewer to Reedsville, and then there was some back and forth about, is this in Reedsville, is it going to just be in the county? And so, I think we finally have a path forward, and I'm excited about that because at the end of the day, I'm trying to bring workforce housing to Reedsville and to this area. There's a lot of jobs coming, as everybody knows, and I'm afraid that we're not going to be able to have places for the folks moving into the area unless we can get some developments underway quickly. The development process is lengthy, as you guys know. To answer one of the questions about my timeline is, you know, I'd like to move forward as quickly as possible. I would, at this point, anticipate probably looking at maybe a fall breaking ground and hopefully constructing homes next summer with houses being moved into potentially by the end of 2026 or the first few months of 2027. So, this will definitely be full throttle if we're able to get it rezoned successfully. I can tell you a little bit about this project. I've just recently completed a project in Maedan known as River's Edge. It was 99 homes. I brought in a builder there, D.R. Horton, and they have been building and selling about four houses a month. So, what that tells me is that there is a strong need for workforce housing. Believe it or not, workforce housing, affordable housing, whatever you want to call it nowadays is in the upper 200s to low 3s, and so that's kind of the price point that we're looking at here. The idea is that we would model it after this subdivision in Maedan known as River's Edge. It also has public water and sewer. That's what makes this project possible, you know, to be able to have the number of To talk about setbacks, that is something that we have been doing in most communities. The cost of developing land has been so expensive that there's really some extra land that's on the side of the houses that really could be better spent, and so, well, let me rephrase that. It cost me about $1,300 a foot to build that road, $1,300. So, by you giving me a variance of three feet, that helps me deliver a more affordable product, and so that's the reason for the side setbacks of being five instead of eight. I know that seems miniscule, but it all compounds, you know, the, you know, three feet at, you know, 1,300, I mean, that's, you know, a little over $4,000. I mean, that's significant money, so that's the reason for that request, and it is consistent with surrounding communities. Most communities, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, High Point, their kind of, their standard side setback is five foot, and so you have 10-foot of separation between each home minimum, could be more, depending on what size house gets built on the lot, and so that is consistent with the surrounding communities, and I'm just asking for that variance as a part of this request. Let's see, what else can I tell you? So, yeah, this plan shows 137 homes. We're asking for up to 150. We probably won't get to 150, but the reason that that's influx right now is we just don't have enough design done on the project yet. It's, you know, this is a concept plan. Once the engineer completes all of his civil design, we'll know better, but the big, one of the big contingencies is he's allowed for a very big area for the stormwater treatment, and that area, once he does all of his detailed calculations and designs, that could probably squeeze down and maybe we could get a few more houses. So, we're just asking for a little bit of flexibility there, and I believe that answers the questions that I've heard thus far. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have, but I do hope that you would vote in favor of this project and help me deliver, you know, workforce housing to this I am joined here by my civil engineer, Aiden Stolfus, and we're available to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for that information. I do have a question regarding you as a developer. You are the developer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you a builder also?
I am not a builder, no. I develop communities. I put in all what I call the horizontal infrastructure, and then the builder will come in and do the vertical, and so I have relationships with all, pretty much most of the big builders in this area, but I particularly have already been talking to D.R. Horton about this one, and because we were so successful in the Maedan project, just looking to repeat the success that we had there, and if you talk to, if you have connections with people in Maedan, everyone's pleased with that development.
Okay. You said that you anticipate being able to provide homes for occupancy by the end of '26. Once that first house is occupied, what's the build-out period? What's the anticipated build-out?
Sure, great question. I would say that we're looking at probably a three-year to four-year build-out in this neighborhood, and I do plan, and this plan actually shows it, I do plan to develop it in phases because you don't want to get ahead of yourself, you know? So, and it, as I told you, it costs a lot of money to build those roads, so we want to build them as the builder needs those lots.
Okay. How many points of ingress and egress do you have?
Yeah, right now, we actually have three points of ingress and egress.
Well, what are those three points?
Okay, so there are two on Salem Church Road, and the other one is tied into Regency.
Tied into Regency.
Yeah.
Afraid I don't know too much about that little, about the road Regency. Is it going to be able to handle any extra traffic from the subdivision?
I mean, it's a state-maintained road.
State-maintained road.
It is a ditch road. These will be curving gutter, which is a Reedsville standard.
What kind of size for the houses? I know you talked about price, what size are you talking about?
Yeah, so we're looking at about 1,800 to 2,500 square feet, all with garages, a variation of one to two-car.
And the elevations, you anticipate two-story, one-story, or a mix of the two?
Been doing a mix. Actually have found a lot of demand for the ranch product, yep. So, it'll be a mix, I can tell you that confidently, yep.
Okay. One final question. You contact all the neighbors as you go through this process. Have you found any objection from the adjacent neighbors regarding this?
There are some here, and I'll be honest with you, I have spoken to a few, but I've not been able to do a real intensive neighborhood outreach because I've been back and forth on what jurisdiction that we are going through. There's a lot of questions that I didn't have answers to. I mean, it was just last week that finally the council said, okay, we're going to entertain this annexation, so, yeah. So, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I do, I definitely will make myself available to work with the neighbors.
Okay.
And, you know, the buffer is one of the ways that we plan to do that. I mean, we realize that this is going to be a big change for those folks in that subdivision next door, and so we're trying to buffer the borders with them.
Any questions? Thank you, thank you. Is anyone else here to speak for this rezoning request? If not, hearing none, is there someone to speak against this rezoning request? Please come up and state your name and your address.
My name is Gerald Miller. I've lived on Regency Drive for 42 years.
Sir, would you mind speaking in the microphone, of course? Thank you.
I've lived on Regency Drive for 42 years. I have a question, okay, well, maybe several. How many exits are there going out on Salem Church Road?
Answer the question, it's two. It's going directly out to Salem Church Road.
Okay, all right. We just had a tree fall down on Regency Drive, okay? Fell over the wires, and there was people trapped down there. They had places to go, graduations and stuff, and they can't get out. Same thing is going to happen down in those cul-de-sacs, okay? Tree falls down, they're stuck. Ambulance falls down, ambulance down there, you have a fire or something, they're stuck. Just want to bring that up. Lot size, how many of you have lived in big cities, around big cities? How far apart are the houses? Sir, how far apart are the houses?
It would be a minimum of 10 feet apart.
10 feet? Okay, that's...
Sir, you have to direct the questions to us, or we can have him to come back up and answer your questions. Okay.
If you've ever been in big cities and houses are 10 feet apart, you have police calls all the time. They have squabbles all the time, okay? You're building 50 years from now, 50 years from now, you're building slums, okay? That's what you're building. Lot sizes are too small. I have no objection to them making money. Matter of fact, I like to see people make money, but don't make the lot sizes too small, or you're going to have problems, and this will be problems. What else you got?
Sir, you need to come up to the podium. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Please come up, state your name and your address.
My name is Carla Holt, and I live at 178 East Plantation Circle. My parents live, who are here, on the corner of Regency Drive and Timber Lane. I have a couple of questions, and y'all bear with me. This is my first city hall meeting, so I'm a little nervous. My first question is, there was no letter or notice, well, that's another question, why was not a letter or notice sent to anyone in this neighborhood saying this was going to happen? This is our proposal. He has sent notice to no one. He also stated that he lives in Clemmons, so this will not affect where he lives at How is Salem Church Road going to handle the traffic from 137 houses when now, today, if you go there, there are times when you go down to 14 to come to town or go to Eaton that you have to wait for the traffic to get you through? There's no light at 14, and this is a cut-through Salem Church Road for the folks that are going to Rockingham Community College and jobs that are in Wentworth. It's already overloaded with traffic. There are places when you go now, Timber Lane, internal Regency Drive, where school buses cannot turn around and have to back up and do a U-turn because they don't have enough room when they go down Green Bar for a bus to turn around. If a bus can't turn around, a fire truck can't turn around. I asked this gentleman where this was in relation to Highway 14, and he couldn't tell me. I asked him where it is in relation to Timber Lane, and he couldn't tell me. He doesn't even know how this relates to the neighbors he's going to build 137 houses next to. People who have lived in this neighborhood, like Mr. Miller and my parents, for 40 and 50 years, and then all of a sudden, you're going to make a street, it's Regency Lane, that's going to go right past the corner where they live and go through a little wooded area and make a whole new road. It just doesn't seem feasible for that many people to live in that small a space on a two-lane road that's not even a highway. I wrote down 6,000-square-foot lot, that's kind of crazy, and 10-foot apart. Houses 10-foot apart? I mean, literally, you can watch each other through the window. He did say, this is a big change for the people that live in this area, this subdivision. Yeah, it's a big change. 137 houses with new neighbors and families with not enough road for them to get in and out is a huge change. When the city annexes this area, is it going to annex all the way over to Timber Lane? He couldn't tell me where that was. Is, are y'all going to provide fire hydrants, trash pickup, sewer, street lights, curbs, gutters for these neighborhoods that you're taking into the annex? This piece of paper doesn't even show how this, the piece of land, does it annex those people? Does it annex Timber Lane? Does it annex the rest of Reedsville? That's not addressed on this paper that has absolutely no street names, and he didn't know where 14 was. Is it anything else? Oh, we got Mall Street, which, would they be in Mall Street School? Would they be in Rockingham County Schools? Do the schools have the capacity for this? Where would these kids go to school? Anybody talked about that? Mall Street would be the nearest elementary school. It's not big enough for that to handle that amount of children. It's not big enough for that to handle that amount of children.
Anything else? Sir, you need to come up to the podium. You can't do that. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
You're fine.
There is a state regulation that says the county, the county has to have a meeting for the people in this area, under the state law, okay? You can look it up, I looked it up. And we have not had a meeting yet. Then we come to here before you annex. Your lawyers can talk to their lawyers, but that's the state law. We ran across this before, so, and I'd like to see the man make money, I really would. I'm not against that. I'd like to see this property grow. I might even buy a house over there. But don't squeeze people in, you're building slums.
Thank you. Thank you both. I'm going to call, absolutely, absolutely. I'm going to call Drew, our planner, back up. Okay. Thank you, Drew.
To address some of the concerns that I've heard so far, I'd like to start with the notice. So, I can't speak for whether or not the developer noticed anybody, but staff did notice this community twice. We follow the general statute. We notice all adjoining and abutting property owners. So if they don't share a property line, fortunately, you wouldn't have received a notice. But if you do share a property line with this development, you would have received a notice. If I remember correctly, it was almost fifty people that were noticed. So, staff did reach out to notice those individuals of this meeting and of the development. Regarding the six-thousand-square-feet, so in the city of Reedsville, R6 is an existing zoning designation. Six-thousand-square-feet is common in that district. So this is not smaller than the development that we currently have within city limits. Now, every district isn't that small, but R6 districts, you typically have that six-thousand square-foot minimum. And there are lots in the city that are smaller, recent approvals that we've done...
Last month.
Yeah, last month.
Existing older development that's smaller. The annexation concerns. The annexation is just for this property. So the way that annexation works in the state of North Carolina, we cannot, we as the city, cannot involuntarily annex a property. We only do voluntary annexation that requires the consent of the property owners, all property owners, not one, every property owner on the parcel that's being annexed. So this would not affect neighboring properties, we're not annexing the entire community, we're not going to go down the road and annex the neighbors. This is just for this property, just this development. And then traffic concerns, that's one that we hear a lot. And I sympathize with the traffic concerns, but unfortunately, staff, we're not traffic engineers. The traffic concerns are typically addressed when we get into that site plan, you know, construction plan development, a little bit further down the road. That's when you see things like TIAs being done. What I can say confidently is that the streets here are being built to City of Reedsville standards. So someone mentioned curving gutter. There will be curving gutter. This is not going to be a ditch road, the applicant mentioned that as well. It's going to be built to city standard. And the city standard will require that there's proper ingress and egress, and that there's proper turnaround for vehicles. And I know the applicant is working with us to figure out exactly what that's going to look like, but city will ensure that it's built to a standard with proper ingress and egress, proper turnaround and access for emergency vehicles and trash pickup. About the hydrants, since this will be on Dan River Water, I think we are working with them to figure out the hydrants. This is just a concept plan, so it doesn't show all the utilities, but hydrants, I would assume, would be worked out with Dan River Water. Those are just some of the concerns that I've had. If you have any other questions, you know, I wanted to address those since they've been brought in.
The fire hydrants wouldn't be a requirement, though, right?
That would be my understanding, yeah. But again, since it's not the city that's providing that water service, I can't really speak to them.
And just thinking ahead, you know, after we've done our part in city council, assuming that, assuming that we approve it and that's still predetermined, if they come back with the site plan and the traffic study, and traffic study's like, this isn't going to work, then does that stop the plan? Does it force them back through changes? Or how does that part go that, you know, as far as affecting it?
Sure. So that's where we're going to look at major-minor changes, you know? So if further down the road, a traffic study's done, something is determined where this many units isn't going to work, they're not going to be able to get approvals for construction or from engineering, you know, based on the current layout, then we'll have those conversations. As mentioned before, if it's a change in density, it changes the points of ingress or egress, changes what's been requested as far as just single-family and the deviations from the standards, then we'll come back. They'll have to come back through that process, because those are major changes. If it's a minor change, it's something, you know, tweaking it from a staff perspective, then we would approve those changes administratively. But if it gets into the point where they're moving roads, they're taking roads away, they're changing that, they're adding roads, then it's going to come back before you and before council for review.
I'm just concerned if a tree falls, they get blocked in.
I'm not sure I understood that entirely, but I can try to, you know, speak on that a little bit. So he said a tree fell on Regency, and it blocked people in. Well, with this development, you're actually adding points of egress from Regency on this interior side through to Salem Church Road. And whilst there might be concerns about that with the cul-de-sac, yeah, I can't really speak to what may or may not happen with the tree falling. I know there's multiple points of ingress and egress, and I think that based on the code, what's required, it exceeds those requirements.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak against? If not, we will close the public comments. Okay.
My first question in response to her is, why are we going to start a project and then do a traffic study? Why aren't we going to do a traffic study now, before you get into all this and then say, oh, wait a minute, we don't have enough road to support this project? As to the notice, she said they sent notice to everyone whose property touches something there. Well, my parents' property touches Regency Drive, Mr. Miller lives on Regency Drive, and the best I can tell, they live down here on the left, because he's going to connect Regency Drive, which is that long run all the way through there. They got no notice. Even though their property doesn't touch this, it's going to affect them. When you turn from Salem Church Road to left on Timber Lane where my parents live, there are three houses. And then that's Regency Drive, and they're planning for you to turn left and go into that development. Three houses, that's how long it is before you turn left or right on Regency Drive. It is not enough room there to handle what they're doing. I would request that somebody do a traffic study now. The other thing, R6 is a city, approved in the city, it's a city, evidently, it's been going on for a long time. These folks don't live in the city, they live in the county, and they moved in the county to have some space. That's great if you want to live in a city and you choose to live there, but they chose to live where the lots are bigger and they have more space. I think these people should have had better notice, and I agree with Mr. Miller. There's not been enough information provided to this neighborhood for what's about to happen if it goes through. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, if there is, thank you for your comments. If there is no other comments regarding this rezoning consideration, we will close the public comments at six-thirty-eight PM. Okay. Board discussion?
Can we actually bring ourselves back in to, for public comment? I have another question for the developer I'd like to ask.
We do that.
In regard to that.
Okay.
I make a motion that we reopen back for public discussion.
Okay. All right, we will open our public comment now.
The builder come back.
At six-thirty-nine?
Come back up.
Okay.
So, there is a question that I've heard repeated a couple of times as far as the community meeting. Did you, did you have a community meeting with these folks? Did you, or how, did you attempt to have a community meeting?
I did not have a community meeting. As I, as I mentioned, it was back and forth, county, city, and I did, I have reached, I've spoken with Tim Pickett, Puckett, excuse me, and Jeff Finch.
Do they live on Regency Drive?
Yeah, they're, no, actually, Tim is on Kingswood, and Jeff actually was across Salem Church Road.
You know, a lot of times with these subdivisions, they do, developers do usually talk and do usually...
I always, I'm not, this is like, you know, the one that I didn't, I wasn't able to do, because there's a lot of, a lot of things back and forth. All I can say is, I would very much like to move forward, even if you're wanting to turn it down. I've got, I've got to find, you know, a project to support housing, so...
Understandable.
Yeah. I just, I'll meet with them between now and council, I can promise you that, but I need to move forward. And if, even if it's a denial, then I'll accept that.
So you're promising to them that you will hold a community meeting?
Yes.
For the city council meeting, July?
Before I get boxed in, do you have an idea when this goes to the city council?
It will go to council on the second Tuesday.
That's...
You have a couple of weeks.
With the Fourth of July. Is there any way we can bump that to the following, so there's enough time to get notice out and meet?
We are, we are hearing the annexation at that same time. It can be a conversation that I can have between now and then in the next month.
Okay.
I think it would mean a lot to the, to the neighbors that you're...
Sure, yeah, I get that. I mean, like I said, I normally do it, it's just been very confusing process.
Yeah, I understand it's been very confusing, because is it county, is it city? Who knows?
I mean, we were on the docket last month.
Right, right.
Yes, I will, I will reach out. Like, it could, it could be phone calls, or it could be a meeting, but yes, I will make contact with the same people that received notice, plus the folks that are here that didn't get notice. I'll make sure I get their phone number before they leave.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
I mean, we can't stipulate it in the approvals, but I think it would be a good gesture.
For you. Agreed.
That was, that was the only question I had.
Thank you. Any other questions for the developer before we close the public comments? Okay? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Will the doctor speak one more time?
Yes, sir.
If you look at your map, if you look at your map, okay, it would relieve a lot of us, okay? If there's two exits on Salem Church Road and not coming out Regency Drive to go up, if there's, if there's a hundred and fifty houses, okay, that's three hundred cars in the morning, and three hundred cars in the afternoon, because both people work, and that's a lot of traffic on them, the two little roads. You need two on Salem Church and the one coming out of Regency Drive. That would take care of almost all the problems. Thank you.
So I think that's what they're choosing, is two on Salem Church and one on Regency.
I don't see it.
It is two on Salem Church?
Yeah, it's two.
It's going to be two.
So, and I can kind of maybe direct you a little bit. So in the top right corner, you'll see a connection to that top corner there.
Okay.
And then you'll see one to the left top corner as well.
It's on the outside of the corner.
And then you'll see the one on Regency.
Thank you.
I have a concern, consider about the notice. Shouldn't everyone in that neighborhood off of Regency Drive, Kingswood, Green Bar? I live on the other side of Salem Church Road at the old plantation. All of this affects me, but I, I don't tuck any of that. Shouldn't everyone on Salem Church Road get a notice? And everyone in that center? Get a notice?
State statute doesn't require that. It's only, only properties that actually touch the property that's affected.
But it affects all of these people. That is not fair.
That's, that's where...
Can you request notice?
Drew?
So the reason that staff follows that statute to a tee is because it's hard to determine where you draw that line. So if we decide to notice everybody within a quarter mile, well, then you're going to have someone within a half-mile that feels they've been left out. And then if we notice everybody within a half-a-mile, you're going to have someone a mile out that feels left out. So it's best practice, in staff's opinion, to follow the statute to the tee, notice the properties that abut and adjoin, so that we're not being exclusionary by choice. We're following the statute.
Okay, and again, sir, these people live on Regency Drive and Timber Lane, and this directly affects them every day, even though their property does not abut to this development. You're going to cut into Timber Lane and connect Regency Drive all the way around. It's a city project, why is there not an entrance off of fourteen? Over here somewhere, fourteen is, why is there not a fourteen entrance? Or two? So you got two from fourteen and two from Salem Church Road and leave Regency Drive in their neighborhood out of this?
That can be something that y'all can talk about in a community development, community meeting. But, you know, to connect to fourteen, you'd have to cut really through another property, so that's, that's not feasible. Now, Regency Drive is a state-maintained road, is that correct? If, that's up to them, if they want to connect to it and their property adjoins it. I mean, that's, again, that's not something that, that we make the call on. We just, you know, we're just looking at the zoning requests and seeing whether or not we think that that's something to recommend to city council.
I have one last comment.
Yes, ma'am.
This gentleman wants to build a multimillion-dollar project off of Salem Church Road, and he spoke to two people in that neighborhood.
Okay, closing the comment. Okay, thank you all for your comments. We are closing the public comment now at six-forty-six, and now it is up for board discussion and vote. Okay. So, board, what's your favor?
I'm going to just say, I just to make sure that we have everything in place that we need to ensure the neighbors are reasonably satisfied. I mean, we can't pass the laws.
Unfortunately, we have spoken to the mic on this. You want to express your concern?
I just wanted to, you know, I've heard the concerns of the neighbors, and I would encourage the developer to make all efforts to communicate with them and to try to resolve and allay any concerns that they have. Whatever might come out of this, we have to follow the law, the regulations, and I would just encourage you to try to make it as easy for the neighbors as possible. Thank you.
I'll, I'll back up what Mr. Motley said, you know? Would highly encourage you have that meeting. Heck, at that point, I don't know, maybe you don't connect to Regency Drive and self-contain it. That's not ideal. The city wants you to have as many connecting points as possible, and that's sound developing. But I do concur with the fact that we need the housing in Reedsville. We need the housing in the area. And you've got Jet Zero building, bringing fourteen thousand five hundred jobs. You've got a battery plant that's getting built over on Berry Hill Road, that's bringing more than two thousand jobs. So Reedsville has a, has a shorting, a housing shortage, and frankly put, it is good for the city to have that kind of development. It maybe is a little out of character for the neighborhood, though. I mean, the neighborhood there does have certainly wider spots, but, you know, they're not being annexed into the city. So, I would just encourage you to have that meeting with the, with the folks.
Any other discussion?
He can invite anybody in that neighborhood, right?
That's right. That's right. That does not have to be the neighboring properties, that can be, that can be anybody on the street, within a half-mile, within a mile. That's, that's your call.
All right, if the board is ready... All right, if the board is ready, um, it's your favor, someone wants to move to accept the consideration?
Uh, we can't put that.
We can't do that.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend that this rezoning be approved with specified parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in amendments.
Can I get a second?
I second it.
All right. It has been moved and properly second that we recommend the rezoning request. All in favor? No opposers, all right? The recommendation has been approved. All right, thank you. Next, we have, uh, you ready? Okay, we have a consideration of a conditional rezoning request for a property located at 650 Lindsay Street, Rockingham County Parcel Number 154376, to rezone the property from residential six. Would you please go out, quietly go out, please? Thank you. And I'll re, I'll reread the, um, consideration. Okay. Thank you. All right, consideration of a conditional rezoning request for a property located at 650 Lindsay Street, Rockingham County Parcel Number 154376, to rezone the property from residential six, which is R6, to Conditional Zoning Office and Institutional, CZ, O-N-I. The applicant and property owner is Ronald Flack, docket number C-C-Z-202505. Drew?
Thank you again, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, Ronald Flack of the Flack Foundation is petitioning to rezone 650 Lindsay Street, Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 154, excuse me, 154376 to Conditional Zoning Office and Institutional from residential six. Uh, as you mentioned, the property owner is Ronald, Ronald Flack of the Flack Foundation and the parcel encompasses a total acre of 0.235 acres. This property is currently developed. Um, there's a single-family dwelling located on site and there is existing or available water and sewer service within the right of way of Lindsay Street abutting to the south and Lambeth Street abutting to the west. There are no streams on site, it's not located in either of our water sheds to Jordan Lake nor Troublesome Creek and the firm, which is the floodplain insurance rate map, does not indicate a floodplain. Um, we just went over conditional rezoning, but to hit the highlights again, a conditional rezoning amends the zoning map with site-specific conditions that are incorporated into that amendment. The owner and applicant get to choose which of the conditions they'd like to place on the property and in this case allowable uses from the office and institutional district. The owner and applicant have requested to limit the allowable land uses to just non-academic vocational schools and offices. The applicant is not requesting to deviate from any of the dimensional standards for this district, um, so they have not provided a concept plan. The concept plan is not required since they're not deviating from any of those standards. It's just limiting the uses. Per Article 5, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance, as you've heard, any major change that alters the density of the development decreases the compatibility of design features, decreases pedestrian features, or changes the uses that are approved for the property will have to once again come before you and city council for consideration. Minor changes that do not rise to the level of a major change can be approved administratively by the planning director. Uh, the proposed conditional rezoning aligns with goal number two of the Reesville Land Development Plan, which is to develop a strong local economy. This includes promoting development or redevelopment of currently underutilized areas and increasing professional opportunities. This property is located on the boundary of two of our growth management areas. Growth Management Area 2 is urban and Growth Management Area 3, which is suburban. So it touches that property or that boundary line right there. Two different districts. Uh, GMA 2 surrounds the city center encompassing the areas immediately outside of the central business district or, you know, downtown. GMA 2 prioritizes the preservation of significant historic structures and provides provisions for expanding retail and commercial services. In GMA 2, there is an identified lack of neighborhood scale services as well as an existing infrastructure network to support sufficient growth. GMA 3 also surrounds the city center outside of GMA 2, primarily encompassing the areas to the south, north, and west of the city. GMA 3 is predominantly characterized by a mix of residential and commercial development, so you have businesses and dwellings intermingled with ample vacant land available for new development. According to the land development plan, GMA 3 provides an existing transportation network capable to accommodate growth and additionally, within GMA 3, residential development is located in close proximity to existing commercial office and industrial employment as well as retail services. Therefore, staff finds the proposed conditional rezoning request to be consistent with the 2022 Reesville Land Development Plan reasonable and in the public interest based on the aforementioned information provided in this report and the attached statements of reasonableness and consistency. Planning staff recommends the proposed conditional rezoning application be approved. And I'll take questions.
Question. All surrounding lots to this property is residential.
Correct.
Isn't it usually not normal policy for us to approve something like that? Where it doesn't, you know, it doesn't connect to existing other type of uses like that?
Yeah, so typically what you see is that there will be similar uses in the area and I believe on one of your maps, either the aerial map or the zoning map, you'll see that I've indicated the distance from this particular site to the other conditional office and institutional zoning in the area. So, based on that distance, staff determined that it was not out of character because there are other conditionally zoned office and institutional parcels in the area. Do they share property long, are they abutting? No, not necessarily, but they are consistent with what's found throughout the neighborhood, throughout the area.
And what is this property currently being used for?
So currently, it's a single-family dwelling. Um, I don't believe it was occupied as a single-family dwelling. The applicant has plans to use it as a, um, office for a vocational school and he's reached out to us to make sure that he meets the standards of the district. He didn't wanna do anything that was in violation of our ordinance.
And R6 doesn't grant him that?
No, R6 is strictly residential. He couldn't do a vocational school as a home occupation, so his option was, of course, to rezone.
And you said it was non-academic, I think I saw that.
Non-academic. So what, what we consider non-academic is, um, you might call it like career services or adult educational training. So you can see CPR classes, you might see financial literacy classes, you might see things of that nature and I would prefer to let the applicant speak on specifically what they're gonna do here, what services they will offer. But this is not a school where you have a 8:30 to 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon students and it's not like a tutoring service for youth, this is for adult services.
Any other questions for Drew? Thank you, Drew. So if the applicant is here, would you like to come forward? Please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Well, good day to each of you. Uh, my name is Dr. Ron Flack. I am the co-founder of the Flack Foundation. I'm a licensed clinical addiction specialist by trade as well as a clinical supervisor. Uh, back in 2020, I was able to successfully launch an opioid treatment center out of the old Teamsters building on Highway 14. So being able to, uh, continue to bring services back to my hometown has always been a blessing. Uh, if you would, please, I would like to just share a few things, um, if.
Yes.
Step 21 for the record is.
Okay, thank you.
Also have here with me my father, who is Ronald Flack. He is the founder of the Flack Foundation. And, um, the pages that you have before you, uh, there are four pages. Uh, the first two are the formal, uh, response to our advocacy for the Flack Foundation to, uh, dwell at 650 Lindsay Street. There's a letter of support from one of the local pastors that we have served as well. And then finally, there's a certificate of appreciation for the work that the Flack Foundation has done uh, with the Rockingham County Youth Services where we have been able to continuously provide a place of volunteerism for, uh, our troubled youth here in the city. It says, uh, "Dear Mr. Harden and members of the planning board, on behalf of the Flack Foundation, we acknowledge receipt of the public notice dated June 2nd, 2025. Regarding today's planning board hearing concerning the conditional rezoning of 650 Lindsay Street, we submit in writing our strong support of the proposed rezoning for the residential uh, six R6 to office and institutional O-N-I. This transition supports our growing mission to meet the evolving needs of the Reesville community with compassionate, innovative, uh, and results-driven services. Since our found, uh, our, our founding in Reesville, the Flack Foundation has remained dedicated in infiltrating broken systems, initiating sustainable healing, and advocating for overlooked populations and administering, uh, practical pathways to hope. Since, since the launch of the Vivian House, which is in actually what 650 Lindsay Street was, was initially named in 2020, we have transformed underutilized space into a holistic community support hub, serving children, families, veterans, seniors, and youth facing adversity. What was once a dilapidated, overgrown, and rotted infested house and eyesore in the neighborhood for many years has now been transformed into a vibrant community hub, breathing new life and purpose into the heart of our community. While the Flack Foundation has become a trusted resource to many families and citizens within Reesville, our efforts have built strong and lasting partnerships with our local federally funded resources. Our active partnership with the Rockingham County Department of Health Human Services has supported at-risk youth and those working through prior life challenges. On May 9th, 2023, which is the certificate that you have before you, the Flack Foundation was formally awarded Team Court Youth Volunteer Community Service Work Site Status, providing structure and opportunity for second chances. So based upon our impact, uh, statement over the last few years, it includes over 600 students annually trained in CPR across Guilford and Rockingham Counties and this is where our CPR team, my, my, my father and those that volunteer, they're going into the school systems and providing CPR, uh, to our children. More than 2,400 students total, uh, educated through entry-level lifesaving medical training. Free monthly CPR classes have been offered to broader public and so we are offering, uh, community CPR as well to those that are in need. Uh, 20, uh, 2,160 hours of community service has been rendered to the city of Reesville since 2020 and over $10,000 in donated labor to support the restoration of a historic pillar church, uh, in Reesville preserving its cultural and architectural significance, which is Cornerstone Christian Center and that is the actual letter of support that you have as well. Uh, ongoing weekly volunteer service at the iconic Universal Food Bank housed at Cornerstone Christian Center, uh, providing consistent community nourishment and so the Flack Foundation has ensured that we continuously, weekly, uh, serve at our local food bank. Annual adoption that we continue to do between 20 to 25 families between the summer and holiday seasons and what we do is we deliver food support, educational supplies, workforce coaching, and household necessities. We also provide some psychosocial rehabilitation as well to those families. Uh, the last thing is a growing reputation as a beacon of educational support for entry-level medical and bedside caregiving, especially for those entering work in group homes and primary care medical offices. The requested rezoning directly enables us to continue this transformative work at scale. We respectfully request the planning board's approval and appreciating the opportunity to present today during, during this meeting. Uh, additionally, I just wanna add that, uh, the constituents and the beneficiaries that we've had an opportunity to serve, several men and women have been given a new opportunity and a new way, a path of work. Uh, several individuals who we come in contact with may have a prior, uh, history of, of, of legal issues and problems and with our opportunity and, and those things that we provide, we're, we're, we're giving people not just a second chance, but another chance. And so in 2020, after the passing of my grandmother, uh, the Vivian House was something that we seen and she always wanted us, uh, my father and I, to continue to be a beacon light in our community. And so we took something that was truly, um, probably should have been, uh, torn down. We, we, we did a lot of arm grease and elbow grease work to uphold its true essence of what it originally looked like, uh, but to also offer a place that is a safe haven. The, uh, the, the residents in that area, they protect that space. Uh, that is a safe ground and so I hope that in your consideration, you hear of the work that we have done as well as, uh, the support that this, uh, this nonprofit organization has provided, uh, to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flack.
This property is actually the Vivian House that we're looking at, is that right?
Yes, sir.
That's the name of it.
Sounds like you've been doing a lot of tremendous work there. It's appreciated.
First, let me commend you for, and, uh, Flack Foundation for the work that you have done. You and your father over there, I know if I saw him at A and P and I know I was okay. One of the best nurses that I've, I've ever known. Absolutely, absolutely. I commend you for just, um, what you're doing with our youth and, um, just continue to, continue to do that and be that beacon of light in our city 'cause we definitely need it and our kids need it.
So what more are you looking to do at, at this property?
Um, just the continued work that we're doing, we do a lot of remote work, so it is not that we house a lot of things at the Lindsay. At the Lindsay property, uh, there are a few classes that we'll do in person, but most of the work that we are doing in terms of the volunteerism and work and things of that nature, uh, it's done off-site. Uh, and I think even over the next few years, we'll see a lot more virtual opportunities, so we're even looking at some more technological ways to, to meet and reach people. Again, just continuously being what we are and who we are and making sure we're closing gaps, um, in, in that community 'cause that is still an underserved area and people that live in that area who are in need, uh, they look at the Vivian House as a place, uh, that they have a voice.
Um, I'd just like to commend you also, uh, for the work that you're doing and I noticed in, um, the literature that you provide community CPR classes, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you anticipate continuing to do that?
Yes, sir. My father does that. He, he, he is a, uh, he is a very generous person. Um, and he has always helped individuals and made sure that people who are either in the field or wanting to get into the field, uh, from our, whom, whom I would call our golden individuals, people that are 70 and 80 years old and older who've never had CPR. He takes time, he walks them through. He names, uh, uh, the, um, the, it, the, uh, the, uh, the contraptions that they utilize and so everybody has, uh, this, this whole mindset that they're looking for Pookie and, and the baby. So just to see the interactions and how this impression is made on so many people. Blessing, but yes, sir. Community CPR is something that we continue, that we will continue to provide.
Okay, that's great. Uh, one of the reasons I asked that question, CPR is something that I need to have in my repertoire because you never know when something like that's gonna be needed. So I will be availing myself of your services somewhere in the near future.
Absolutely, and he'll, he'll make sure we get you connected.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Flack? Thank you, Dr. Flack.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak, um, for the, um, rezoning consideration? Please come up and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Dr. Kathy Badger and I live at 304 Maule Street here in Reesville and I stand in support of, uh, Mr. Flack, Flack Jr. This is my student, so he's doing what I taught him to do, and I train my students well. In terms of giving back, not only do you do your service, but if you don't give it back and train someone else to carry on, then you die with that knowledge. So he has been groomed by his mom, and he grew his son the same way, because he was little when he started seeing me. And he was my student from RCC all the way through. So my goal is teach you so you can teach someone else. So if you don't pass it down, it's not worth it. The house that they're in was Ms. Lane's house, I call it Ms. Lane's house. I grew up on Lambeth Street, right there, grew in that house, seen it many times before it was remodeled. All her kids were raised there, so I know what that neighborhood is. So I think because he is training people to administer meds and assist with care in these group homes, assisted living, believe me, there is a gigantic shortage, not only of those caregivers, but of nurses as well. We're gonna be over 100,000 nurses short, very shortly. And that includes educators, because I'm retired, I don't teach anymore. My presence, I'll teach you, but I don't teach anymore. But I think he carries on what I taught him to do. And his son has picked up the banner on the other side with the psychological, and that habit is he, so I'm here. And I'm probably biased, but I consider him to be one of mine. And he's gonna do the best for Reesville and the best for you.
Thank you, Dr. Badgett. Anyone else here to speak for the rezoning consideration? If not, is there someone here to speak against it? Hearing none, all right, public comments, section end at 7:12 p.m., all right, board discussion. All right. Will someone make a motion to approve the rezoning request or consideration?
I made a motion to recommend the proposed zoning be approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination, statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Thank you, can I get a second? It has been moved and properly second that we approve the consideration for rezoning for the location at 650 Lindsay Street, all in favor? And the rezoning recommendation has been approved, so, thank you. All right, at this time, directors report, do we have anything?
So, we haven't had any new businesses permitted this past month, we've got a lot of residential storage, a lot of remodels that are ongoing, but no new businesses that are notable within the last month. We've got some things in the works that hopefully we can tell you about next time. We're working downtown, we're working with a couple of businesses, we're closing every week five, and hopefully, once those come to fruition and we get the permits in and get permit approvals, then we can bring them to work again.
Sounds good, everybody keeps asking about the Golden Corral Building.
But otherwise, you're speaking to the things that council last month.
Yes.
They are moving forward with the annexation hearing for the rezoning that you were tonight, and hopefully that will be forthcoming in the next month or two. We'll work with that applicant to figure out a timeline if there is to be a delay there, but everything that went before council last month was approved.
Thank you, thank you, Drew. Planning board member comments, any comments? We want to welcome our newest member, Ms. Kia Mills. Welcome, welcome, Kia. I know she's gonna bring a lot to the table, a lot to the board, we are glad to have you, welcome. At this time, would someone move to adjourn our meeting?
So move.
All right, meet and adjourn, thank you.